Greetings, come to order. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Honolulu Liquor Commission. If you're appearing today, please introduce yourself, spell your name, and the same with your client. And if you're here to appear and testify on any agenda items, please introduce yourself, spell your name for our commission's reporter, and you will be, your testimony will be limited to three minutes. With that being said, there are no minutes to approve, so let's call Agenda Item Number Calling transfer application number 1-9-16721, TK World LLC. Ms. Wu.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Min Young Woo, on behalf of TK World LLC, doing business as Hopeo Kim Art.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
If I can go ahead and get into the record, Chair?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, this is a public hearing.
Yes.
Excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received one written protest, zero letters of support, applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to testify for or against this application? Ms. Rai? Do you have any knowledge of anybody in the waiting area?
I don't, there are none.
Okay, very good. With that being said, Commissioner, any questions or type of action?
I have a question.
We should reissue it.
Have you seen the protest? Have you seen the written protest?
Letter? No? Okay. I'm gonna, sorry. You can, you may hold onto this copy.
Proceed, if you can introduce him for the record.
Yes. So on my right is the, uh... Takuro Ino, who is the president of the company, a member of the company.
Okay. I know you just saw the written protest, which is the July 1st letter. Before I ask you questions about that, Ms. Wu, and I know you handed a copy to your client, when I looked at the investigative report, the opinion indicates, just before the signature line, that the business was transferred prior to permission approval. The reason I point that out is, I don't, I cannot say that the photographs attached to the written protest are actually, were taken on the date stamps indicated, but at least a couple of them appear to have been taken in June, which is just a few weeks ago. And so the broad question, and maybe you can speak with your client, is whether he has any knowledge of this type of activity depicted in the photos as of the time he may have been in control or owning the premises.
I saw a few of them, and I...
Oh, I'm sorry. If, could he, he'll need to stand closer to the microphone. Could you, could you stand over here? Thank you.
Let me, let me ask you a very specific question. I know you may not be able to say that these, what's depicted in the photos is something that's accurate as of the dates shown in the photos, but does this generally show the nature of the area surrounding the premises?
Not, not really, actually. It's, I hire the security guards and to inside, I mean, he's a property manager, so he generally taking care of the outside too. But my job is inside, so, you know, currently I didn't see too much of this kind of stuff, you know?
Okay. When did you hire a security officer?
Actually, he live upstairs, you know, he's in a car, he's, you know...
No, when, when did you hire?
Oh, that's as long, I mean, as when I took over, which was last year, but he currently working actually right now, so he hired another guy and to help, you know, to clean up those people.
Is, is part of the security officer's job is to make sure the sidewalk is not...
Yes.
Hold on. The sidewalk does not have people that may be depicted in these photos?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one question, Mr. Ino.
Yes.
So have you reviewed the photos?
No, actually.
Could you please review them?
Sure.
Because these were, these were taken on the April 10th, 2020?
Mm-hmm.
These are very disturbing.
Right.
So, picture number one, because I realize that this area is heavily occupied by homeless people, but do you ever sell alcohol in your premises and put them in a brown paper bag?
Oh, I did that, but I, I don't, I don't drink outside.
Okay, so can you look at, can you look at photo number one? It seems to be a Polynesian male without a shirt, and he's drinking from, it looks like a paper bag. I can't take, I can't identify the container, but I would, I would speculate that it could be an alcoholic beverage placed in a paper bag, and if you are representing to this commission that you do, if I was to go in there and buy a bottle of Corona, you would put it in a single paper bag for me, that would be kind of a lamy.
Right.
So what is your answer to my question?
I didn't.
Pardon?
No.
There's somebody outside that wants to go outside.
Okay, thank you.
So my second question to you, sir, is, on picture number three, which shows your market, mark, and a lot of people that are congregating in front, that is part of your property?
This is not my property outside, but I told the security, you know...
Yeah, so, I mean, how do you control the people that are loitering? Because there's, there seems to be two gentlemen that are sitting down, one gentleman that's leaning up against the wall.
Right. So, yeah, I keep telling the security to clean up these people.
So, I mean, do you have, do you have any security to tell them people you cannot sit on the public side while they're loitering?
Mr. Ino?
Yes.
Thank you.
I also noticed that you don't have any liquor, liquor experience. Who is, yeah, so who is working at your establishment full-time?
I have seven employees.
Seven?
Yeah. A part-time job and then full-time job. There are a couple of these, they have experience for this kind of job, you know, of course they have experience in with this right now, yeah.
So, um, may I speak for, you know, so obviously, this is, the photo is taken at this time, and loitering, very serious, uh, loitering and, uh, the disturbance situation is happening. But if you could give him a chance, and then manager, to train people better, and myself, I have a retail store, and we have some homeless people staying there, but after we asked them to move, what we couldn't do, the last, last thing we could do is just calling police to ask them to help. So if you could give us, him and his manager, a chance to try that, then it would be really appreciated, because obviously, it's very better known to him, the situation is better known to him. Go ahead, point.
I have a comment to that, and I appreciate the concerns any business owner has with homeless people in the area, but at least my concern, and I think I speak on behalf of the commission, is that we want to make sure your client is not serving, selling alcohol to the people who are congregating there, and that's what we need to focus on. So if there's, I mean, I don't know if you know whether your staff, your employees are actually selling alcohol to people that fit this general description, but if they don't, that might be a huge step in eliminating them from the area.
Right.
That, I was gonna make that same comment, but also, I don't think this is good for your business, that if you have people that are looking to buy something, and they want to stop at your store, and there's all these people standing and loitering on the sidewalk in front of your doors, I myself would not stop there, because I don't feel safe. So I think for your, the sake of your business, and also for public safety, you need to do something about this.
Yeah. I totally agree with your opinion, I really appreciate for that, so, yeah, from now on, you know, I'm gonna call police, you know, to get rid of these people, you know...
I think it's better if you call the police to help, instead of the residents calling the police to complain about your establishment.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Any further questions or type of action?
We have a testifier.
Yeah, we have one testifier. I'm sorry, Chair.
You do have one testifier?
Yes, we do.
Thank you very much. They're here in person?
Yes.
Okay, please bring them in.
Thank you. We have two.
Okay. I'm not running a timer, nor do I need to swear, Councilmember Fuganagaian.
She is recognized by the commission. Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again.
Okay, good afternoon, board members, commission members, rather. This particular instance is one in which I think many of you are familiar with our efforts in Chinatown earlier to try and manage, you know, many of the issues and problems that are associated with liquor establishments that also sell and dispense liquor in a manner which seems to encourage the congregating of people in and around the neighborhood, which creates a lot of personal safety and hazardous conditions for nearby residents. Today, we have submitted testimony providing some photos, you know, that we have received from neighbors in the area. We have been working very closely with the Honolulu Police Department Narcotics and Crime Division, as well as other community policing representatives on a wide variety of issues involving abandoned cars, drug dealing, other illegal activity in and around various properties along this street. And so when we learned that the, the transfer of this license was being heard today, I did want to make sure that we registered our very strong concerns about the activities that are occurring in this neighborhood. And, you know, if the commission is looking to allow the transfer, we would certainly want to see specific conditions imposed that would reduce the incident of public safety concerns that the area legislators and the residents, as well as other businesses, have expressed to us over the years. We were not able to compile a list of all of the HPD complaints that we have received over the last two years, but as you know, in many areas where this COVID-19 pandemic has shut down other kinds of businesses, the prevalence of individuals who are either consuming alcohol or other kinds of drugs in mixed-use residential and commercial neighborhoods has become a very, very severe problem. So with that, you do have my written testimony on behalf of myself and Senator Rhodes, and happy to answer any questions.
Ms. George, do you have any questions?
I have a question, Councilmember Fuganagaian. First and foremost, thank you for appearing and testifying before us. The written testimony indicates that one of the conditions that you and Senator Rhodes are suggesting are to impose limitation of hours of operation. I took a quick look at the date and timestamps on the photos attached to the written protest, and it appears that the range is from 8:30 a.m. to 6:50 p.m. So I'm not sure how limitation of hours would affect or impact what appears to be in those photos. What am I, your comment on that?
In this particular instance, I don't know whether a limitation on hours of operation, you know, would be the same or the most appropriate remedy. I do believe that it is within the commission's jurisdiction to require the establishment owner and dispenser to provide a lot more security and to ensure that, you know, the premises in and around the liquor establishment are kept free of people who may mullinger in the neighborhood and who would otherwise, you know, potentially pose threats to adjacent neighbors. I think in the Chinatown incident, instance, rather, we do have a number of liquor establishments that are in very close proximity to each other, and so the limitation on hours is kind of designed to reduce some of the churn that occurs between the various establishments, as well as other providers who support providing services, meal, meal services and other kinds of services to chronic homeless individuals.
Thank you.
Any further ques, other questions, Commissioner? Thank you very much for coming, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to convene into executive session. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. We are now in executive session. We're now back on the official record. Commissioners, do you have any further questions or a type of action?
Yes, Chair. Ms. Wu, our motion is gonna be that we are gonna continue Agenda Item Number One, transfer application number 1-9-16721 for 30 days, and what we will require from you and your client will be a business plan to include, a business plan to include security and proper protocols to address the issues that were brought before us today.
A second motion.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number One is continuing for 30 days with the conditions stated in Commissioner's, Vice Commissioner's, Metabon's motion, and also that the public hearing will be left open.
Oh, yes, thank you. Yeah, revise the motion, public hearing kept open, yes.
All right? Okay.
Thank you.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number One is continuing for 30 days. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's call Agenda Item Number Two, transfer application number 20-20961.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Min Young Woo, on behalf of Yeong Son Lee, doing business as Doi Ban.
Good afternoon. Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
If I could go ahead and get something in the record, Chair?
My bad.
Yeah, we're still in public.
Ms. Rai.
And also, if you would identify your, whoever accompanied you, please.
Yeah, manager of the operation.
He Sun Kim?
He Sun Kim, K-I-M.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support, applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, and could you verify, Ms. Rai?
Yes, there are none registered to testify at today's hearing.
Very good. Commissioner?
Motion to approve transfer application number 20-20961. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Two, transfer application number 20-20961 is approved.
Thank you, commissioners.
Calling Agenda, yeah. Oh, I got two strikes already, yeah? One more strike, I'm out. Okay, calling Agenda Item Number Three, transfer application number 20-21099, Cuz Investment Corporation. Ms. Wu.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Min Young Woo, on behalf of CUS Investment Corporation, doing business as Maui Pink Market. On my right is the president, Choi An Soo Sa.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support, applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, and Ms. Rai?
Mr. Chair, we believe there are none.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Motion to approve transfer application number 20-21099. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Three, transfer application number 20-21099 is approved.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you very much. Calling Agenda Item Number Four, transfer application number 20-21199, MTPC H LLC. Mr. Gota.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Neil Gota, appearing on behalf of MTPC H LLC, doing business as Maui Tacos. To my right is Mason Cummings, the owner. We have no changes to the report, and applicant has been operating on a temporary license with no problems.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gota. Ms. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support, applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Ms. Rai, for the record, would you state, you have no knowledge of any?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair, there are none.
Okay, very good. Commissioners?
Motion to approve transfer application number 20-21199. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Four, transfer application number 20-21199 is approved.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Calling Agenda Item Number Five, transfer application number 20-21323, Chef Poki and Sushi Rule LLC. Ms. Cole.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Naomi Cole, on behalf of the applicant. Present to my right is authorized agent, Mr. Cho Zuo, C-H-O-Z-O, Y-O-K-O-T-O. We have no changes to the investigative report.
Thank you. Ms. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support, applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wish to testify for or against this application? Ms. Rai, for the record, could you please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, there are none.
Very good. Commissioners?
Motion to approve transfer application number 20-21323. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Five, transfer application number 20-21323 is approved.
That concludes...
That concludes the public hearing, Ms. Rai?
That is correct.
Thank you so much. Calling Agenda Item Number Six, a special license application. Application's number 20-2189012, 20-21890-3, TBB Holdings Inc., Mr. Z. Bakalau.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair's members of the commission, Ms. Rai, Emmanuel Z. Bakalau, here on behalf of TBB Holdings Inc. I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much.
Could you identify the...
Commissioners?
Yeah, sorry.
To the right is Ted Securis, he's the owner and operator of TBB Holdings.
Thank you.
That's a COVID pump, like that. Yeah, this is the hog.
Motion to approve special application number 20-21890-1 to 20-21890-3. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Six, applications number 20-21890-1 to 20-21890-3 are approved. Good luck, gentlemen.
You seem a bit shocked.
Yeah.
No, really.
I tell you, Bill, I'll stop. This is the hog. This is the hog. This is the fish pole. It's been social. This is the hello. Come on, you guys. Keep me up to date in there, and this is how you do it. Calling Agenda Item Number Seven, application's number 20-21643, Ku Ya Shi E LLC. Ms. Cole.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Naomi Cole, on behalf of the applicant. Present to my right is owner... Good afternoon, commissioners, Naomi Cole on behalf of the applicant, present to my right is owner Hideo Simon. We have no changes to the necessary report.
Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioners?
Okay, motion to approve the application number two zero dash two one six four three.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number seven, application number two zero dash two one six four three is approved.
Thank you, commissioners.
Calling agenda item number eight, application number two zero dash two one six seven nine.
Yes, Chair, due to a conflict, I'm going to have to refuse this agenda.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Lee. Sexy Suskwan?
I did not name this company.
That's sex why?
Yeah, I, yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Keuch, introduce yourself and please, uh, pronounce your client.
Good, good afternoon, Chair, uh, members of the Commission, Keith Keuch for the applicant. The majority shareholder, Shi Feng Zhang, um, who's not here, but he will be here for the preliminary hearing. For the Commission's background, Mr. Zhang, whose English name is Alan, this will be his third restaurant, Onowahu. He has one in Millilani, one in Kapole, this is the first one where he's branching out. The other two are Japanese sushi restaurants, this one is a Zechuan restaurant. As you can see, he's got other partners, he's also got two restaurants in the Big Island.
Very good. Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
I, I have one thing, I'd like the license picked up on October fifteenth because stuff is going very slow in this, uh...
October sixteen?
Five, one to five.
One to five, fifty.
Yeah, thank you.
Not bad, I only missed it by two, huh?
Okay, motion to approve application number two zero dash two one six seven nine, um, to be effective October fifteen twenty twenty.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eight, uh, application number two zero dash two one six seven nine is approved, effective October fifteenth.
Thank you very much.
Can we have Commissioner Lee back, please? Calling agenda item number nine, application number two zero dash two one nine two one, Makaha Binimar.
James Smalley, here, Representative Makaha Binimar.
Thank you. And you're accompanied by?
Aaron Nelson.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions, type of action?
Uh, motion to approve temporary application number two zero dash two one nine two one.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number nine, application number two zero dash two one nine two one is approved. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number ten, request number two zero dash two one nine three two, Chuck Seller at Waikiki East. Mr. Rolls?
Yes, Scott Rolls.
Would you introduce yourself and spell your name for the Commissioner to report?
Scott Rolls, R-O-L-L-E-S, uh, president of R D H Limited, D V A Chuck Stick, Chuck Seller.
Very good. Commissioners, this is a request for, um, renewal relief that differs from the Irish Rose Saloon renewal license without payment of applicable fees. Immediate placement and safekeeping fee to be paid in full upon removal from safekeeping.
Mr. Rolls, um... I'm assuming that you're aware that there, there have been, um, other applicants that have asked for hardship relief in which they were able to negotiate a, uh, stipend?
An extension, an extended period of payment.
Yes.
To be honest with you, I, I mean, I have obviously followed it, and, uh, when we started this process in April, Anna Kiari suggested that I, I actually used her wording in my request, but, uh, the Irish Saloon, Irish Rose, uh, solution works if you're open. And we're in Waikiki, you know, we're screwed for now, and we're not sure if we're gonna be able to reopen, I, I gotta be honest. And, uh, you know, Chucks has been part of Waikiki since nineteen fifty-nine, and it's very difficult to stand here and say that. But, uh, that's the reality of it, and we just don't have any, we're, we can't believe why we're sitting there waiting. And luckily, uh, we've got a situation with the landlord that they understand that, at least now, and it's in their best interest to keep this hanging on too. And, uh, we're trying to just stall for time. Obviously, if we have a green light and see a, a, a good opportunity to reopen, we'd be back here in a heartbeat to activate the license. But in the meantime, we just can't afford to, you know, we have one employee right now, that's me, and I'm getting zero salary. We have no, uh, no money, and, uh, we just can't afford to keep betting on something that we don't know what's gonna happen, and that's the honest truth. I wish it was otherwise.
Thank you for explaining, uh, the situation.
We're certainly not asking for, for a freebie except to hold off on activation. And, you know, we've, between my dad's operations and mine, you know, dozens and dozens of restaurants and establishments over the years, and we're pretty good standing with you guys, always have been, always intend to be, and, uh, we're not asking for, for anything except to wait without cost.
And you will be placing your license into safekeeping?
Absolutely. Yep. Simultaneously with, with a decision in our favor here.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, motion to approve, request number two zero dash two one nine three two.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number ten, request number two zero dash two one nine three two is approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Understand.
Hope we're back here soon.
I hope so, too.
Hard when you only get five or six hundred tourists coming in today, huh?
Hey, to be honest, it's a little spooky down there, too.
Yeah.
Five hundred, six hundred guys walking around, you don't want them around.
Okay, um, let's move on to agenda item number eleven. Agenda item number eleven?
No show.
No show?
No show.
Uh, request number two zero dash two one eight five zero, um...
My God, these people.
Ms. Hara, what would you like the Commission to do with this?
Um...
Continue it, or?
Well, um, my preference is not to have the Commission to, uh, take action on a request to revoke, uh, to revoke the license. Um, as a, uh, I suppose if the Commission took no action, uh, the license would, uh, basically expire on its own accord. So that may be the, the least violent of the options available.
Have they haven't applied for renewing?
What?
They haven't applied for renewing?
Um, I don't, I don't believe so. And i- in any event, if they were to attempt to renew now, they would, they would need to come back before the Commission because they'd be renewing after June thirtieth. And, uh, actually, with this decision, um, they would have the ability to appeal, so to speak, if, for, you know, whatever reason. So if the Commission took no action, um, I, I believe what would, the end result would be that, uh, the license would die, uh, of its own accord. And maybe that's the, the preferable, least violent way to dispose. I was, I was not expecting them to not show because they, they continue this specifically so that they could appear. So...
I'm after least violence.
Okay.
Least violence.
We'll try it. I mean, maybe they'll, they'll come back, but I got poor Mr. Hall all booted up again for the second time in either helping work, but that's good.
So what should it be, um...
Um, basically, no, just, I'm gonna say, uh, there's been no appearance by the licensee. I'm gonna ask the Commission just to not take action on this matter. No commission action required.
So for the official record, we will take no action on agenda item number eleven, and now we will move on to agenda item number twelve. Yes. Uh, calling agenda item number twelve.
Yeah, just her for now.
Request number two zero dash two one eight eight six, Julan Schubert Quoc.
Oh, we're one down now. No, no, we're one down.
Sir, can you move away from Ms. Quoc, please? Six feet social distance. Can you move, can you split six feet away?
No, he's my dad, we're family.
Same family. Same family.
Same family, okay, very good.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Before I, we start this clock. Are you, gentlemen, going to testify?
Uh, these are the licensees, Mr. Chair, and they have the, they...
Oh, okay.
Uh, given their, uh...
Oh, yes, I recognize, uh, Monica like, okay, very good. So, uh, Ms. Quoc, please introduce yourself for the record, and you will have, you will have three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, um, Commissioners, Chair, for taking the time, and also thank you for, uh, licensees for coming. That, uh, this is a community concern, and we are requesting that because of the nature of the violent episodes happening so often in Chinatown, that we're requesting that for the time being, it is possible to reduce the hour operating, um, sale of liquor. It would really help, uh, our community, first responders, and, uh, to at least prevent some of these psychotic and, uh, alcoholic outbursts and, uh, damage to our property and, and, and people and businesses, and it has been happening quite a bit. And we do credit Monica Liquor for closing now, by about midnight, but the issue still hasn't changed because I think their culture is one that they think if I sell the liquor inside my store, I'm no longer responsible for whatever happens outside. And that's not the case, because many pictures showing people just sitting out there drinking from the liquor they just bought, and then moving a few doors down and then becoming crazy and out of control. So I don't know how we can together solve this issue because we have republied and draws a lot of people for meals. In fact, they're serving couple hundred meals now a day, and so we have people with COVID coming from different parts of the island to be fed. And because of staying placed, of officers cannot really move down too much unless it's truly blocking a doorway. So when the liquid is available till midnight, most of Chinatown is closed by about five o'clock. Everything's closed except for a few restaurants that need to open. So we are continuing to enable and feed our very vulnerable, uh, people with a rough, uh, mental health issue.
One minute remaining?
Yeah. So we are hoping this Commission will be able to look into yourself, to see how you can help. Even the mayor's come up with a new plan yesterday, Monday, because we at a critical point. So even if you put a moratorium on, on the hours, say seven o'clock, we are still feeling that there's something being done to alleviate the very volatile and violent situation in Chinatown that a lot of folks are not willing to come down to take the risk. So I hope that you give it your best consideration and, uh, provide some, some safety to us and that, uh, the homeless can also get some relief from, like, it's not so easy to get alcohol, so please, thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. So before I open it up, Ms. Hara, uh, Ms. Choi, would you like to... You wanna hear from the other licensees first? Okay. All right. So, um, is it Mr. Lee?
Ken.
Yes, please, please come forward. Would you like to make any comments as to what, so what we're gonna do? We'll give each licensee an opportunity, three minutes, to rebut what Ms. Quoc is asking for?
Uh, there, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, can I get it confirmed? There are other people out in the lobby who are, uh, wishing to testify in terms of, in support of, um, Ms. Quoc's position?
How many?
We're trying to confirm that now.
Yeah, can we find out, because I only have, uh, one?
No one.
No one.
Okay, so...
So I only have Ms. Quoc.
I, I don't know if, uh, uh, D C C Choi would prefer to make her statement prior to the licensees being asked to rebut, it's...
I want to hear what the licensees have to say.
Okay, awesome.
I want to address everything at the end.
Okay, awesome.
Mr. Kim.
Mr. Kim, come to the table. Can we make, uh, can we make guarantee we have six feet social distance between Ms. Quoc and, um, Mr. Kim?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I'm from Monica Liquor, John Kim. Uh, my store used to be twenty-four hours, but because a lot of problems there, as what community said, so we closed at midnight. Now because of coronavirus, we cut down to ten o'clock, Sunday closes at nine. And, uh, I don't miss, I should, you know, community means Chin- Chinatown community. What they do is they just don't do nothing. What I'm saying is, if you see anybody drinking or call street or homeless, line down or whatever, they just take a picture, put it on S N S. That's good job, but why don't they call police, help for them? They just leave them alone, they, they showing how the Chinatown dirty, mess, homeless, all this. What I know is community is not only people, street, Chinatown, so many rubbish in there, there's no help. Now they only pick on, you know, alcoholic people, drunk people, and, uh, homeless people. They're human, you know? So instead of coming here or to stay, whatever, complain about it, why they can't call help, H B D. Anybody myself, I'm trying to hide as I can, there's a maximum that I can do as a person, and there's a, sometime I call H B D help, they can help me to try to clear my area, I only can go so far. So, me, myself, and all the business in the Chinese, uh, Chinatown community, we should do something together. Instead of picking something, pick on this, that. Homeless police is right there. So pretend if there's a guy hanging off beer, liquor, whatever, I get stupid ass, I'm sorry, my language, then instead you just took a picture, put him on S N S. Why don't you call, call the police? Help! Move those people away. They're not calling police, I do. And I'm trying to clear so many distance, my area, try not to get drink over there, try not to hanging out over there. Sometime we working inside, we don't notice that, but when I go out the door, have a break, then I see somebody, I told him hundred times, ten times, you guys got, gotta go. And some of the people, they're not listening, I, myself and my employee, we refuse to sell to a customer like that. That's the best thing I can do. You know, and I'm close at ten, there's a few restaurant closes at nine, closes eleven, and there's a bar is open. I don't know so issue about liquor store. This liquor store owner is a matter of the life and death. We have, uh, steady paid out, pretend rent or whatever, you know, but income is said low and lower. So it's matter of the myself and all, probably all the store, restaurant owners is talking about life and death. If you're not gonna make a payment, then what? I'm gonna go another homeless? But one thing I promise you, liquor commissioner, I did try my best I can do. And sometime I shorthand, I call police, uh, uh, H B D, calling help, they can help, and they, they pass by somebody sitting down, they stop there, tell them, you got, you cannot sit around, you gotta go. So we all gotta try together. You know, if there's a problem, we'll just pick on here, here, here. That's gotta do something, instead of complaining, sit down. You know, if there's a problem, we just pick on here, 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 that's gotta do something instead of complaining and sit down. That's what I'd like to say, sir.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have, Mr. Kim?
Yes, sir.
One minute, please. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Kim?
I do have a comment, I, I'm gonna paraphrase, I heard you say you don't sell alcohol to people like them. I think that is a good policy and I'm not sure who you're referring to like them, but you're not supposed to sell to known alcoholics and to the extent you do not serve alcohol or sell alcohol to psychotic or mentally drained people. I agree with you, that's a great policy, you should continue that.
Yes, sir, last year you got a picture, one of the Chinese community SNS group. Anyway, they took the picture, one of the guy, I don't know where he bought it from me. Is it from me or the store, then I don't know. But all I see picture was, he had three or four cans, yelling scream, and middle of the road, crossing the road, any kind of actions. Okay, I saw that, I saw him on, on SNS, so he came when I was there. I think so, sir.
That's what you remember.
Yes, sir, so what I do, he came, so I show him the SNS picture, how he is. You know what, I lied to him, please send me this picture, I refuse to sell. So, he cannot come to store, if you do, I'm gonna call the police. After that, he don't come around, he attempt to, I told you, I'm gonna call the police. So, he not coming around, so stuff like that, I'm trying my best, sir.
Thank you very much. Any other further questions? Thank you, Mr. Kim, we appreciate your cooperation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, please.
Except you, that's friends and we're CJ.
You go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, come, introduce yourself.
Yes, sir.
And please spell your name.
Thank you.
You have three minutes, Ms. Choi.
Well, I, I wasn't running a timer on Mr. Kim mainly because I was, I was somewhat hesitant to establish a three-minute limit on someone who is defending their, their license. I'll be honest with you, as opposed to the, the proponent of a request. I mean, I, I can do that, but that's why I did not run it on Mr. Kim.
Okay, so appreciate, appreciate.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Min Ku, I'm a dentist from California. M-I-N, like Simon, K-U, just kite and umbrella. I'm a licensed dentist in California, so I'm a doctor, but not that kind of doctor, I'm just a tooth doctor, tooth mechanic, if you will. I came in two thousand and seventeen, sir, to help my mom and my stepdad there, Mr. Hong and Ann Ku, to run CJ Market, this was in March of two thousand and seventeen. Since then, despite being a UC Berkeley and a UCSF trained dentist and a region at, at that honors and everything, I was quite surprised and if you understand, Berkeley is very liberal, you understand, sir, but I, I do vote Republican, I do tend to go to the right. But that's neither here nor there, but it's just because I spent a lot of time in San Francisco and at Berkeley. And so, I know a little bit about the homeless problems and some of the issues that this, this nice lady brings up needs to be taken very seriously, but I think that she's before the wrong board. I think she needs to go before the Department of Safety and Health. We pay our fees every year and they come and inspect our premises for cockroaches, rats, make sure we practice. We can't even sell simple musibis from, from like, I'm just gonna say in Korean, ajum mother, right? Who's trying to make a buck to send their kids to prep school, SAT prep, that kind of thing, right? And this nice gentleman here, he's from UC Davis, he's also California, but because he's in Aggie, he's not quite as, what, tiki-taki as me. He actually closed his store because he's got young kids, you understand? He's protecting his family of a business, also he's Cambodian. So, in California, it's the Cambodians that own the, the liquor stores. Here in Hawaii, it's Koreans. It's thanks to, sorry about, sorry, I, I just got this case like, like, see, I'm in my gym shorts here. My dad called, you know, he's my dad, he's my stepdad, but he's my dad. We've been running this store together for three and a half years. The bottom line is, if you check the record with substation Chinatown, check with any of the officers, Dee Stanley, Dee Huen, okay? Who fight against me every day because I want to file the paperwork and they don't want to do it. Why? Because the laws are too lax here? So, perhaps this nice lady needs to go before who? The legislators, right? She needs to go before the Health Board, she needs to go before Lane Kim, she needs to go before Governor Iggy, she needs to go before KHNO, KHO, and two, maybe even Honolulu Civil Beat, but not before the Liquor Commission, you understand? Because it's us responsible business owners that are getting what? The streets finally sprayed again, you know? My stock boy told me about that and how does he know? He's just a farmer from Waianae, right? I didn't even know about that. And we pay high fees, you know, you know, I kind of got upset when the, the Health Department, not the Health, sorry, the garbage department, right, whatever it's called, told us we have to spend money to get these yellow bags that cost almost a dollar, right? It's not the liquor stores that are putting the trash on the streets. Why isn't she targeting the meat markets, right? Why isn't she targeting these social services, right? These are the things that draw the homeless people to Chinatown, not the liquor, okay? The liquor stores are there for, our customers are nice, we serve the Micronesian community, they depend on us, they take the bus, they pay their five dollars and fifty cents, you understand, right? I, I heard earlier lady, I thought that was this lady, I'm sorry, I, I don't know, I just got the case, right? I'm not even a lawyer, I'm just a dentist, but I do know laws and regulations and this is just bananas, really, just bananas. She should go before different bodies, sir. We pay a high fee for our liquor license, a lot of the restaurants depend on us, they send the customers to us because they have a bring your own beer policy, right? I take the training program because my parents can't speak English, I take over management, you understand? So, I can pass the test and I make sure that they follow every single law and regulation. We don't have a violation, I can't speak for any of these other businesses, business owners, but just from, from Mr. Kim's testimony today, who I just met today, and, and this nice young kid here, right? I'm almost fifty. You understand that we are the ones that are saving Chinatown, we are the tax dollars, we're the reason why the trash collectors come and then, you know, and they tell me, they say, hey, sister, we cannot pick up trash that's in the black bags, but we can pick up all the rubbish that, so I said, okay, I just empty the bags, you understand, right? These rules are bananas. So, anyways, sir, all I want to say is this, okay, she has her case, but these are just allegations, right? You could review the, the, you could, but we don't even need, need to do that, okay? Sorry, I'm a little nervous, I'm stuttering now. All she really needs to do is go before the right governing body, the legislators, media even, right? And rage, rage, you know, before the, the mayor, Caldwell, right? Caldwell's a good mayor, I think, you know? We got the COVID situation under control because Hawaii people are proper, right? California's out of control, that's why I don't go back, even though it's overdue, right? But, but they, they told me to take a break, I took a break for two months. That's unheard of in at least my family culture, my personal family culture. And she talks about the culture, but no, we're talking about laws and regulations, we follow everything, sir. And if there's a violation, you let me know and I'll make sure we correct it, we pay the fine. We don't go on the payment plan, sir, right? We pay, we pay very expensive fines, sir. And that's all I have to say is, we're the ones that are saving Chinatown, we keep it clean, he keeps his block clean, I make sure, I do all the paperwork, we just solved a robbery two cases that became a felony because of me and my dad. I taught, I taught my dad, run, run to the substation, don't fight them, Koreans want to fight, they want to do the taekwondo, right? No, he runs and he's backing away and the guy sucker punches him. Now, he's what? In jail, thanks to what? Because what? He, he served in the Vietnam War as a Korean, you understand? And we're about to what? Celebrate the Fourth of July. So, it's the quiet ones that often get run over by the, by the big fat Hawaiians. There's one guy there.
Please.
Anyways, I'm sorry about the language, sir, but anyways, the point is.
Get the personalities out of your testimony.
The, the point is, the, the police are very frustrated, so please help the police department, we love the police department. We couldn't do business without this substation. Ask any of the corporals, Corporal Aaron, okay, Corporal M, I don't know the names too much, but, but they know me and they know us and they'll tell you that CJ Market is proper and I think these two gentlemen are too. Thank you, thanks for your time.
Please, don't, don't leave yet.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the testifier? Okay, very good.
Thank you, sir, thank you for your time, you're interested.
Thank you for coming, we, we appreciate it.
We appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for letting me have to be here. My name is Rawe Long, spelled R as in robber, A-L-O-N-G. My own flat, Fred Sandry's located at one five nine North Street, North Hotel Street in Chinatown. First, let me give you some real numbers and facts, okay? In two thousand nineteen, before COVID nineteen pandemic, Business Daily ranked our state forty-fourth for best, for best states for business. Forbes ranked us forty-seventh, CNBC ranked us forty-ninth. Now, let me remind you, this is before the pandemic. Now, fast forward, fast forward to recent events, a study by the University of Hawaii Economic Research Organization paints a crueler picture. Since January two thou, since January two hundred and twenty thousand, full-time and part-time jobs have been lost. Some industries down more than eighty percent, hotels by far the largest with eighty-three percent, arts, entertainment and recreation by seventy-eight percent, retail by seventy-six percent, and food services by fifty-eight percent. Now, those numbers are not including employees who have their work hours cut. With the current increase in numbers locally, nationally and worldwide, we can make an educated assumption that the future of running businesses in Hawaii has become very bleak. I'm here today trying to understand why a few leaders of our community want to further cripple business in Hawaii. Last year I sat at, last year I sat at a Chinatown neighborhood board meeting where a proposal was actually brought up to eliminate liquor licenses in Chinatown. Then, a proposal was brought up to not issue new licenses in Chinatown. Now, today, we are here trying to reduce operating hours in Chinatown. What's next? My store does not only sell alcoholic beverages. Five PM is a time where folks are just arriving home from work. They go down to the local convenience store to purchase alcoholic beverages, snacks, soft drinks or food for home. Business is very hard right now. I personally closed for one whole month while, while in March, while the pandemic was going on. I'm slowly still trying to recover what I lost. I do not agree with this request to reduce hours and ask the Commissioners to do the same. I spend eleven hours every single day at that store, seven days a week. I know exactly what's going on out there, it's not alcohol. It's a mental health issue and it's a drug issue. And it's all happening within two blocks of the Chinatown Police Station. I, for myself, I can't speak for the other two operators, owners, but I don't sell to anybody who's drunk, underage or has mental health issues. I cannot control where everybody decides to drink. I can't control if somebody comes in and buys their friendly drink. Because I have no idea where that drink's gonna go once it leaves my door. What I can only do is control what's in my store. And I think I've been very responsible since two thousand thirteen, when I took over. So, I'm asking the Commissioners, please, don't do this to us. It's been hard enough, thank you.
Very good, hold, hold on just a minute, Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
You said you don't sell to anyone who's intoxicated or.
Underage, who has clear mental health issues coming in.
Um, what is your, besides carding for someone who looks very young? Do you have other policies when it comes to IDing individuals who are wishing to buy alcohol?
Yes, anybody that looks young or younger than me, I ID them. So, given in their thirties, forties, it does not matter, I still ID them.
Would you be opposed to a one hundred percent ID check? I, in other words, anyone who wants to buy alcohol, whether they look old or young, that they have to present a valid government ID?
Yes, but you will, you will run into a lot of persons who, folks never had a driver's license because they ride the bus all the time. Folks who live here full-time, they don't have a passport, so they have no way of issue of having an ID. And those, a lot of those are actually folks who are older, not younger, so you can, but I think, I think it's a big restriction that's kind of hard to.
So, you'd say that the majority of your customers wouldn't be able to present a valid ID?
No, majority would happen, you can clearly represent an ID, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Do you mind if I address that point?
Pardon?
Do, do you mind if I, I address that point?
Oh, no, you, you had your opportunity, ma'am, thank you.
I'll make sure, very good.
Thank you.
Now, can we hear from, there's no other testifiers? Okay, can we hear from the prosecutor's office?
Good afternoon, gentlemen, members of the Commission, and Miss Yui, Deputy Corporation Counsel Monica Choi on behalf of the City and this administration for agenda item number twelve. I'd first like to clarify that my presence here and what I'm about to say is not in advocacy of any of the licensees or even the requester, Ms. Chubert Quack. I'm here to explain some of the finer points of the law to show that the request is not an administrator-initiated request. I want to point out that under Rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point two five B, you can, a petition can be made to impose restrictions and conditions, but there are a number of reasons which I'm about to claim why this is not such an administrator-initiated petition or the administration's not going to pursue a petition to restrict any of the conditions on or impose any of the restrictions or conditions requested. I'd also like to point out HRS section two eighty-one dash seventeen eight eight, which is regarding the modification of the hours of business. If you read it, it says that the hours must be uniformly changed as to all businesses within the class in the county. So, we cannot arbitrarily change the hours for these three licensees and ignore the others. And that, and, and for that reason alone, the request by Ms. Chubert Quack should be denied. But I'd like to go into the next, the, the, the rule, three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point two five B, about why this administration's not seeking a petition. Ms. Chubert Quack submitted photographs of, of persons that appear to be mentally ill in the vicinity and areas within Chinatown. First, I'd like to say that this is the wrong forum for the request, for the remedy that she seeks. A lot of the photos are shown of people who appear to be mentally ill and it's in broad daylight. It does not appear that reducing the hours of business will address the problems that she seeks to, to resolve. Also, the photos themselves do not show an adequate nexus between the sale and activity of the licensees, I mean, sale of alcohol and activity of the licensees to the, the conduct that you see in the photos, I mean, and a lot of, a number of the photos don't even show the people in front of the, the premises that they're complaining of. And, you know, even the sidewalks in front of the licensees premises, that, those sidewalks either belong to the city or to some other entity, but if it's not part of the licensees premises, the licensee has no control to, to control the conduct of such people. And, and those people, we don't even know based on the photograph if they were even patrons of the licensee. There, there's a lack of connection to the licensees and that's a problem. But I think that the glaring point of all the photos is that there's a rampant problem in Chinatown and the Liquor Commission is not the right place to address those problems. If you want to look at another point of law, two eighty-one dash one, you'll see the definition of premises and it's really limited to the building, or, you know, exactly where the footprint is, so that's just going back to one of the points I made. There has also been a, a failure to acknowledge that there are other licensees of a similar nature in the area. There's Walmart, there's Long's, that sell alcohol, but yet the focus is only on these three liquor stores. So, we have to look at the fairness. And I reviewed the violations issued for these licensees and quite frankly, they, they pale in comparison to many of the other licensees in Chinatown. So, it would be, in my opinion, unfair to impose additional conditions and restrictions upon the three liquor store owners that have come here today. We would have, I mean, and you see in the photos that, you know, the people are in all, all sorts of places. You can see one in front of Murphy's and that's not Don Murphy's problem, but you know, it, it, this is a problem of the neighborhood and this is unfortunately the wrong place to ask for a remedy. Also, I'd like to point out HRS two eighty-one dash sixty-one B. On Ms. Chubert Quack's request, doesn't meet the requirements of chapter ninety-one of the Hawaii revised statutes for a public hearing, you know, it, I, I understand that the liquor licensees are, are here and that's because, you know, this administration notified. this administration notified them, but, you know, if there's going to be a request to impose these kind of restrictions, there needs to be adequate notice. Adequate notice meaning that they were informed within fifteen days, and they were given time to prepare. She should have filed an affidavit too, I would say, in my opinion, to, you know, let the commission know that that appropriate notice had been given. And then that there could be a a proper public hearing, because it's clear that not, no one came to testify on any, on behalf of any of these parties. It's probably because there wasn't adequate notice. Thank you, do you have any questions?
Commissioners, are there any questions of the prosecutor?
If I could, kind of tying two of your points, Ms. Troy. What I'm hearing is, under the statute that you just cited, there needs to be adequate notice for this type of request, not only to the retail license, but if it is going to impact all retail licensees in the county, it has to be noticed to all the retail licensees.
That would be fair.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I forgot to make one more point, because, you know, I I think this is something important to say. I did review over a two-year period of police reports only regarding Monica Liquor, because, you know, last year, there was an issue raised with Monica Liquor. To be honest, Monica Liquor was more of a victim than the cause of the violence that was occurring in the area. And many of the complaints didn't even have to do with Monica Liquor. It had to do with other activities, just in that area. So there's an indication that there's a problem in the neighborhood. And I, again, based on my review of the the police reports, I didn't see an indication that Monica Liquor was actually the cause. So therefore, you know, there, I, we just don't have enough evidence to support Miss Chuan, I mean, Miss Schubert Quoc's request. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, with that being said, Mr. I. Your recommendation to the Commission, or a type of action, no action taken?
In situations, there is a number of options available to the Commission. You could take no action, you could take the matter under advisement. You could also, there's also the obvious approve deny. So it's basically the Commission's call, what along that spectrum of choices you you wish to do.
Motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, we're now in executive session. Okay, thank you very much, we're now back on the official record. The Commission will take no action on this matter this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have one more item on the agenda, Agenda Item Number thirteen. Very good, calling Agenda Item Number thirteen, our request number two zero dash two one nine one four for a visiting Ico Burger, authorized agent for Roma Spear LLC, DVA, Arnold's Beach Bar and Grill.
Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioner Nisho, of the authorized agent Debbie Eichelberger, who's to my right. Eichelberger is E I C H E L B E R G E R.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, I believe you have a letter from Mr. Kiu Chi.
I've, I've spoken to Mr. Kiu Chi prior to the hearing, and I understand his position, he's got no objection, no problem.
Correct. As I said, Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
Mr. Nisho.
Yes.
Kind of confused by the request. Isn't, isn't this your client's second time asking for the same request?
Yeah, this happened two years ago, Commissioner. And last year, she was able to renew the license, and this year, I believe she tried to renew it online, and it wouldn't, the system wouldn't allow her to renew it, if that's my current understanding. That's why she's, the time was running out, that's why she came in with this request at the last, at the, you know, at the eleventh hour.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just put on the record, whether, there are two, there are two licenses that Miss Eichelberger has been involved with. One is King's Pub, and the other, which is not before you. And the second one is Arnold's Beach Bar and Grill. So with respect to the King's Pub, she is able to renew that because according to our records, our LCS records, she's the one hundred percent sole officer-director stockholder, which I'm, as of, as of two thousand and ten, I am told that that information is not correct. But because our records reflect that she is the hundred percent stockholder, and there's supposed to be some action taken to correct the proportion or the numbers of the ownership of the King's Pub, you know, we're waiting for that to take place. With respect to Arnold's Beach Bar and Grill, although there has been action for a mediator or arbitrator, no order has been issued. So we are kind of stuck with information that is not current, showing her not having a majority or ownership interest in the set, in this particular one, Arnold's Beach Bar and Grill. Everybody understands that there is an award made to Miss Eichelberger with respect to Arnold's Beach Bar and Grill. It's just that the order has never issued, so that we have not been able to correct our internal records. So this is a, everyone thinks it's going to be fixed in a year, and it hasn't quite yet. And so this is why we sort of, and I I believe one of the times we have come before, it it may be because Mr. Kiu Chi's, Trudy Kiu Chi's letter does not say that they, that the punitive owner does not have objection that she be allowed to renew indefinitely. It's just, he he gives it for just a year at a time, which is why we we tend to have to come back here. At some point, it's supposed to be able to be fixed, it's just we haven't kind of, it it's just taken a long time because they can't get the order out of the mediator arbitrator person.
If I can clarify, Mr. Nisho.
Yes.
Mr. Kiu Chi's letter says, basically, he doesn't object that your client can renew the license as an authorized agent as opposed to any ownership structure. Is that your understanding?
I I have not had a chance to review the letter, Mr. Kiu Chi did not provide it to me, but that's my understanding, Commissioner. And Commissioner, I'm about to answer your question. The matter is before Judge Gary Chang at Circuit Court, it's just, he hasn't acted on it yet.
Okay. Okay, my motion is circular, request number two zero dash two one nine one four, second?
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, Agenda Item Number thirteen, request number two zero dash two one nine one four is approved. Calling Agenda Item Number fourteen, Administrative Matters. Meeting is adjourned.